Oh. Alright, the short introduction right into things here today. Jello again, this is Ben Hitchcock Cross talking to you. Uh, we are going to go through a motion. It is titled a motion to preclude audio and or video recording of the full around hearing along. On the hearing on the merits. And um. To me, it's one of the most un-American things I've ever seen. To the extent that when I read it. I did not even understand I when I read the first page, I didn't understand that they were talking about. Not having video at the actual hearing. But. That's what they did. I do have it from uh Mr. Reardon that he's. Perfectly fine with us uh reading this document out now, so I think we should. And uh we'll go from there, but yeah, no, I. The main thing I can say about this before we start going through is. When it oh and look. Chris Reardon is a respected attorney, I get it. How uh you all may feel about uh his performance on this, I don't know. Much about how indicative this performance is of uh his. Past dealings. I've only dealt with him in the last two years, it's true. That his law firm has, you know, billed almost uh. Half a million dollars just for dealing with me uh over the past. Year, uh maybe I'm off on the timeline there. And it is true that um we have had some. Confrontations, I think that um. He is less familiar with the E R D than I am. Uh in terms of the concept of it being a uh workers tribunal as I like to call it. Um, I think that um he is more comfortable in federal courts. That I also will say my hand gestures are one thousand percent a copy of Chris Reardon. Thousand percent. And that much of my uh I he and I have had a lot of experience, so I. I just uh I wanna say that uh this is an adversarial process. And that um. When Chris and I are together and we have the opportunity to chit chat. We try to focus on football, that being something that I used to be quite versed in, and I know that he uh likes. And um. So we stick with those subjects, it took us some time to find uh you know mutual ground, but I think we've got it. And um I think he's well aware of uh some of the traps that people can fall into. Um if they engage in what they think is idle chit chat with me. But you know, hey. Otherwise um. I just wanna point out that um. Yeah, and I and I wanted to make this comment sometime back because I think. Ten twenty years ago, uh if I had seen a performance of anybody. You know, let's put it like this, I would say I I would have. Labeled. The activities of the Milwaukee Public Schools is evil. And anybody who is supporting those activities as evil. Okay? I today I am much more nuanced uh in my feelings about that. And I do want to always encourage people to understand that. Mister. Reardon. Myself. Uh, all attorneys have jobs to do. Okay? You may think that the way that they are carrying out that job is unethical, I may agree with you. Um, but that is not necessary, there's that sort of component of it. And then there's the job aspect. Okay? And I just wanna take out that this, I wanna make a distinction here because we talked about workplace bullying. Uh in the last one, and I just want you to understand. That Mister Reardon, just like everybody else, has to come to work. So um I want to distinguish him. Himself from him, the actions. And uh I know this sort of sounds like a lecture to a fifteen year old here. Um, but uh. I do often feel in the comments in um not just by no means just on this channel, and I don't wanna single anybody or anything out here. Um, but I think generally, you know, I you know all that I watch a lot of uh Law Nerd, uh Law Tube, or however all that goes. And the I do read the comments and I think that whoa, I must have had an emotion there. That um I do read the comments and I think that. O- oftentimes, people are have a tough time distinguishing the attorney from the job. And that's all I'm talking about here, so we're about to go into this preface and here I am, six minutes, that's Ben Hitchcock Cross for you, okay? So um. Working on a new motto, by the way, gonna test it out here. Um, come for the cross examination, stay for the due process. Maybe process do, and we're working on it, okay? So. I just wanna keep those facts in mind, I do know. That people sometimes turn their um ire onto the attorneys themselves, and this. Defense attorneys, especially public defenders. Um, you'll see that on, for example, Judge Simpson's chats all the time or uh. Comments and um. Again. I just wanted to separate the um. Attorney from the actions, and I also wanna point out that. It may not be as easy as you imagine to say. No client, I'm not gonna do that. I mean, you need to, you have to, but I just again wanna point out that um. It may not be as easy. As you say, I think that's the nuance part, okay? We're good with that one, now we can move on to. One of the most un-American things I've seen in quite some time. Alright, so. This is the cover letter to uh from uh Mister Reardon to. Uh Peter Reinhardt, who is an A L J administrative law judge, also known as a hearing examiner. Uh for the Department of Workforce Development. There is something I want to say about uh Mister Reinhardt as opposed uh and. Why I think the title of administrative law judge is more appropriate or isn't or whatever, I don't wanna start using examiner as a diss. But I do wanna say that um. Mister Reinhardt has always allowed uh both sides to be heard. No matter what. And I that at least in of itself is something to be noted. Because that's frequently not the case. At the department. So. It's kinda shocking that we're praising people for due process. Do you want a cookie for due process, but yes, that's where we're at, so. Uh here and I, part of why I wanna point out with this document is they always send out this fancy um. Cover letter and then they'll have they'll fax it, they'll email it, they'll have their secretary send it on extremely nice paper. Uh and that's the version that I'm gonna read from. Which in my mind is just stealing books out of the mouths of uh students. So um. Respondent's motion to preclude audio and video recording of the follow-on hearing. Along with the affidavit of Jay Ryan Maloney. In support of respondent's motion to preclude audio and or video recording of the hearing on the merits. Okay? So these guys sent a motion, I will say he didn't uh one time I can criticize Mister Reinhardt is the. Von Breezen. Um, Chris Reardon sent a motion to them saying the the. You have to follow the statutes in terms of uh captions and all the documents have to be super fancy. Now. There is a rule that's quite specific that says that the uh. Hearing examiners and the administrative hearings do not follow the same process as uh in the circuit courts, and there's really good decisions on that. Um nevertheless, this judge decided that we all had to do fancy captions and everything else, okay? Sometimes we might throw a fit and refuse to do that. Because it's my opinion that that's absolutely not the law, and I know for a fact. That they will accept things in crayon from people who are unrepresented. But uh sometimes we don't, so I just wanna you know, point that out as a tactical move. Sometimes it's it's not that hard, it really all depends on the will of the client, this is what I'm trying to explain to you. I personally may wanna go tell him to go jump in the lake or whatever, uh the client may not, guess what, who wins? Okay? So. There we go. This is what, by the way, this part again up here, uh I guess you can't see my arrows, so the top state of Wisconsin Department of Workforce Development, all the way down to respondent, that's what's known as the caption. Okay, they'll say the case number, yada, yada, yada. MPS is, everybody should know, is really the Milwaukee Board of School Directors, if you sue them under MPS, you might have a problem. Uh then there's this thing here, it's called motion to preclude audio and or video recording of the follow-on hearing. That's known as a style, okay? So um something. They could say it's a motion styled a motion to preclude, but it's really a motion to dismiss or something, that's the way that verb is used. Uh but the noun form of it is what's in between those two uh bars there. Okay? Those bars, by the way, is creating them is the number one trick that a legal secretary really needs to know about. Alright. We're gonna get so this and and it's I submit to you that this is absolutely ludicrously um formal. And that uh it's contrary to the rules, and the only reason they're doing that is the same reason they send all these documents out. Uh three times and everything else is just merely to uh for billing purposes, that's my belief. Yeah. Because I don't think it's necessary, and I've seen the size of their bills. And because I've mentioned to them also that I don't think. That it's necessary and they continue to do it. So. This I probably have more reasons, but that's. Those are my well-founded reasons, alright, respondent Milwaukee Board of School Directors by its attorney Von Breezen and Hopper. S C hereby moves this tribunal for an order precluding any audio and or video recording of the hearing. Currently scheduled to commence on February fifth, twenty twenty four. It's not happening, so don't get your hopes up for a lot of different reasons. Um which at this time they knew it wasn't uh gonna happen on that. Day, I think I was gonna argue that maybe it's a little premature, but it's just the I'm gonna quibble with the word commence. I mean, what's that signaling is overly formalistic legal language here. Also, this has videotaped too. Uh, that's gonna be uh. That sort of format there is gonna it's sort of. A precursor, a pre, it's giving us indications that's gonna be legally is coming. Perfectly fine, but you know, we we might need help with translation, alright. Complainant has videotaped every deposition in this matter. See now again, I would just say complainant videotaped every deposition in the matter. But, okay. During the depositions, complainant has not only videotaped the witnesses, but also defense counsel, okay? Videotapes of depositions taken in the follow-on matter have appeared in public forums, including a YouTube channel. Entitled deliberate indifference, Wisconsin, which appears to have been created by Deborah Keether and complainants counsel. Attorney Ben Hitchcock Cross. Mike DeGale was the videotaper for the follow-on depositions. Okay? Mike DeGale is absolutely the videographer, uh by the way. Yeah. And thanks to him, he's awesome, we really appreciate his volunteering his time. It's a pain in the butt. Alright. I uh the. I don't wanna make this personal, but I am gonna critique on this document here. And believe me. My writing is subject to criticism. Like the embarrassingly so on sometimes. I do not, I wanna admit that, this is what we do here, we admit bias, but then we go on to critique uh with that bias in mind. I am not putting forth critiques of this document as a critique of Jay Ryan Malone. Or Chris Re, I suspect that Ryan is the one who wrote this, but but. That's neither here or there, this is that's why this is the whole point, it's not personal, we're trying to learn together. Okay, so I don't see that that first line is sort of helping with that uh paragraph. Especially a topic paragraph there, a first paragraph in the subjective background. Who the heck is Mike DeGale and why do I care that he's a videographer is what I would wanna know immediately. And probably before I had known, seen that sentence. Okay? Respondent was, I guess we're gonna have to go over to this joker here, let's hope it's this one. It's not, it's not, it is, alright, so um was a party to a hearing brought by complainant. Doctor Garcia Hoven, who was also ren- represented by attorney Ben Hitchcock Cross. That when other people use that, I find it extremely annoying, so if I do it more than twice, somebody picks me, thank you. Oh, now I got it, it was the use of the word respondent. And the passive voice. Was a party. It just wasn't, okay, I'm gonna restate that first sentence there. That says that uh complainant Doctor Garcia Hoven, also represented by attorney Ben Hitchcock Cross. Filed an equal rights division complaint against MPS. Okay? In Doctor Garcia Hoven's equal rights division hearing, Mike DeGale videotaped that hearing. Okay, got it? While Mister DeGale's connection to attorney Hitchcock Cross. This is the, by the way, a first reading for me, and or the Cross Law Firm. Is unknown to respondents. Attorney Hitchcock Cross stated during the Garcia Hoven hearing that Mike DeGale was a member of the public. Okay? If a document came across my desk by somebody from my firm that said. That we don't know what this fact is, I would immediately strike that out. And say. Okay? I I oftentimes have a joke with my uh son, who. By the way, is not externally one of the most funny people I know, but it certainly is internally one of the uh. Does see the humor in quite everything, he just uh as. He often tells me, just cuz I'm not laughing doesn't mean I don't think that you're amusing. But you gotta respect that. The point is um we often have this joke uh that we'll look to each other. And uh sometimes we call it joke number one, but it's A equals A. Come on! So uh that joke, it just refer, that line just refers to that somebody has said that something equals the same thing. And they don't seem to be aware of it, but um. That attorney Hitchcock Cross stated that Doctor Garcia Hoven, that uh Mike DeGale was a member of the public. Okay? Let's say I could also have said Mike DeGale is a natural person. Mike DeGale is Mike DeGale. Did you see what I'm saying? Alright. And portions of the video recording of the Garcia Hoven. Hearing appeared on. Keithers and Hitchcock Cross's YouTube channel as well as Keithers Facebook page, okay? So this what's problematic there is, if we go back to here, it says. He says which appears to have been created by Deborah Keether and complainants counsel attorney Ben Hitchcock Cross. And then he goes and says that it is. Keithers and Hitchcock Cross's YouTube channel. That is problematic uh in it the fact that on once. Paragraph it says appears and then. It is another paragraph. It is the next paragraph, it says that it is. So um you know, there is at least a space there, that might account for why there was that paragraph break that was. Found to be strange before, um but okay, so that's the background, I guess, now we're gonna move on to the argument. Pursuant to Supreme Court Rule, Chapter sixty one. The tribunal has the authority to preclude any member of the public from the proceeding. Specifically, S C R sixty one zero one provides that. The authority of the trial judge over the inclusion or exclusion of the press or the public at a particular proceedings. Or during the testimony of particular witnesses is applicable to any person engaging in any activity authorized by this chapter. The Wisconsin Supreme Court rule goes on to state in this chapter, trial judge includes any judicial officer who conducts a public proceeding. Uh huh, and A L J is a judicial officer appointed to conduct hearings on behalf of the Department of Workforce Development, see. With stat, Chapter two twenty seven and with amended code. Two eighteen, as such, the A L J is a trial judge as defined in S C R, Chapter sixty one. Okay? And so my guess. When looking at this, I I mean, I know. I. I know. Two things before going on to this, I know that there's a statute that says that these hearings must be open to the public. So. I also know that unless the Supreme Court rules that that is unconstitutional. They can't make a ruling. Or a they can't have a rule that's in conflict with the statute. That's something else I know. Which leads me to think that they wouldn't be in conflict, just for starters, okay? Um because the question here right now isn't are they in conflict, the question is, is an A L J a trial? Uh court judge? Okay, or does the point of trial judge, see there's something in Wisconsin called a magistrate uh judge. Uh that's appointed that can hear lower things, there's all there's things um. That doesn't always necessarily have to be a judge uh to have a proceeding in a court. Okay? So. Let's. I'll just. Through the magic of uh pausing here, find the pages and let's do some research. Alright, so here we are, uh this is S C R, Chapter sixty, Code of Judicial Conduct, so that's immediately raising a red flag for me. Because I know that A L Js are not covered by the Code of Judicial Conduct. How do I know that I, Wisconsin has an ethics hotline. Set up for attorneys uh to discuss uh is possible issues of ethics. And I think uh I just have it from them, and I've never examined this further. Uh but I have it from one of the authorities there, I believe. That uh. That is the case, so it makes me think that I better find out for myself. What did LeVar Burton always said, don't wanna take my word for it, so um but that's. I'm explaining that there to sort of explain how judicial reasoning goes. And or legal reasoning goes, and I. Need in order to know that I'm right on a law, I better have some reasonings and uh. Better have some legal. Uh citation to back myself up. And I'm gonna feel uncomfortable until I have that, so um. And realizing as I was going through that analysis there that the only way, I don't have anything written, I just have somebody telling me that, which is. You know, a valuable way to go along, we can't be looking everything up all the time, but if you're gonna argue something, you really do need to. Uh find it out for yourself, so. But I just, I know that uh from other avenues as well, that again. That an A L J is not covered by the judicial code of conduct, they have their own code of conduct. Uh for example, and we've covered that, there's a video on that out here. So um. Okay, so we're going to definitions. And uh. Judge, what was it? Part-time, ah, there's municipal court judges, that's true. We'll just go back here, sixty one oh one, and so we're still in sixty. So we need to go. A little bit further down. See how this website is set up. I know this one, alright. I'll pause here for a second, thank you. So here is another sort of rule of uh legal research that we're gonna look into here. What they've done, and let's go back to uh their argument here, they say that S C R, Chapter sixty one. Says that there's this trial judge, okay? And they're gonna, then they say to figure out if an A L J is a trial judge, we're gonna go look to statutes of uh two twenty seven. And Administrative Code two eighteen, okay? Well, we'll go down a little bit there, two eighteen, okay? And so I just wanna point out again, Supreme Court rules are rules published by the Supreme Court. Wisconsin statute, that's that part there, that those are the laws enacted by the state of Wisconsin legislature, so that's gone through the whole legislative process. Okay, so um. This is a document, Supreme Court Rules is a document published by, or not published, well, published, but also. Authorized and powered by the Supreme Court of the State of Wisconsin, the judicial branch. Judicial branch gets to make the rules over the judicial branch. It's how things go. We've had that discussion, the um housing authority gets to make the rules over the housing authority unless there's a greater rule, okay? Because, for example, the legislature can come in and say that all judges have to wear pink robes. Gotta do it. Just for example. God, that would be really cool if they had different panoplies, different robes for how long they've been on the court, just for example. That would be kinda cool. Stripes like uh the professors, that would be pretty cool. You know, um a different hat based on the law school that they went to, or you know, stripes for how many times they've been appealed. Overturned, that would be uh something. It would be a visual indicator of much needed information. That's what it would be, okay, but again, so I wanna point out here that we've got the sources of rules are really from all over the place. So he's asking us to use the Wisconsin legislature to interpret what the Supreme Court means. And then this is Wisconsin Administrative Code, so that's the governor, he's asking us to use the governor's decisions to interpret again what the Supreme Court rules mean. That's problematic. It may be the right tool, but in. Always you're going to use, it's a standard rule of construction, that you're going to try to give sense to the chapter as a whole. And if you're going to look at what the chapter is about, you're gonna first look at that chapter itself and see if there's anything that guides you in there. So to do that, let's go to the old, oh, there's definitions. Chapter sixty itself has straight up definitions right at the beginning. Maybe it tells us what the heck a judge means. Isn't that amazing? It's pretty cool. They, I mean, it's just super helpful, so the um if I were going to. Try to figure out what the Supreme Court means when they say judge. I am first gonna consult the Supreme Court, and if they have a definition on what they mean by judge, I'm gonna take them at their word. For a lot of different reasons, but uh mostly because uh. For a lot of different reasons, but uh mostly because uh legally, that's the thing to do, okay? There's actually a Supreme Court case that explains to us how to do that, so judge. Number eight, judge means a justice of the Supreme Court, okay, we got that. A judge of the Court of Appeals, makes sense, a judge of the Circuit Courts, got that, a reserve judge. That's a judge who can go into the Circuit Court but is, you know, uh mostly retired and sometimes they have too many cases than they can handle. A municipal judge, okay, that, by the way, is one of the reasons why you don't mess with municipal judges. And when they say take your hats off, you take your hats off and so forth in Wisconsin, a court commissioner. Good idea. Now, here's the big question. And anyone, whether or not a lawyer, okay, so that could be an attorney, but it also could be a clerk. Who is an officer of the judicial system, that might be a clerk, it could also be a court reporter. And who performs judicial functions. Now, that's the key phrase there, so there's gotta be an officer of the judicial system and performs judicial functions, okay, so. Let's just look at that there. Is an A, does it, we'll take the second half first because that may be um. The answer is yes, maybe, does an ALJ pers- perform judicial functions, okay? Technically, they perform quasi judicial functions, and there's cases on that, what the hell does that mean? I don't know. Is a judicial function and a quasi judicial function the same? I say no. Okay, but maybe they could be, I don't know, I mean, it seems like, it seems like you can make an argument for that. That a, when they said judicial, they also meant quasi judicial, you could say that, okay? But we have this thing here, who is an officer of the judicial system? Okay, is an ALJ an administrative law judge or hearing examiner employed by the uh. A uh an officer of the judicial system, well, let's look here, they do hold an office, so they're an officer. But are they of the judicial system? No, they are employed. By we, cause we have the organizational chart, not by the judicial system, but by the governor of the state of Wisconsin. So under that test, automatically, we know they fail because they are not a judicial officer. Okay, that was, that didn't take very long, did it? No, okay, I'm gonna pause here and we'll go see if the next page has any value. See, now you did it, you got me into. Chapter two twenty, you just, every time I open this chapter, I learn something new, so now you did it, okay? It's on you, I'mma help this victim here. I do love the fact that even, you know, twelve year old kids are like telling me what the definition of gaslighting is, I I really like that. Um, okay, so I'm sorry, this is awesome. Here's a chapter of the statutes of the state of Wisconsin, it is entitled Administrative Procedure and Review. This is the administrative law. Chapter, okay, so general provisions, we don't care about that, we note that there is this joker in here called definitions. And compliance with other statutes, so that's, ooh, alright, um. How interesting that small businesses has a chapter here, now this does not just apply to Department of Workforce Development. It applies to Department of Corrections, Department of Transportation, Department of Natural Resources, anytime you've got two parties. Uh that are having a contest, a disagreement about administrative law, that's what happens. Okay, so let's say that you wanna have a peer and the Department of Natural Resources does not want you to have a peer. Then you can have the right to have a contested pairing if you've got some facts that could be in dispute over your peership, okay? And uh that being the case, um I don't know where you live, but having a. Peer right in Wisconsin is, you know, second uh only to having like a lake property itself, um so. Yeah. I'm, how much time are we in? Yikes. We'll, we'll pause here, I'm gonna tell, we're gonna do this thing, I'm gonna tell a brief fact here, uh which is um. Now I'll leave that story for another day, it'll be a treat, okay, so. Uh we are still in administrative rules and guidance documents, da 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 da, but this is um. What explains how administrative rules are made, right, so that's when we're looking at DWD, yada, yada, yada. That's an administrative rule, so the department can say now, there's an administrative rule that says where the hearings are supposed to be held. That's the county, they wanna change that rule because they've been violating it since covid. So they can, now they've got a proposed rule change, and now people've got a right to be heard on that issue and so forth. So, um, that's what this section is, petition for rules. Oh, let's put that on our pocket for later, alright. So the hearings that we're all talking about in here, ooh, look, notice of hearings, that's really good, no, this is notice of hearings of guidance, administrative rules. We don't care about that. Administrative actions and judicial review, that's pretty interesting, that's how. You know, if they declare your wetland not a wetland or whatever, whatever thing you may wanna fight about. You can take them to the Circuit Court is the first level to review these things, okay, judicial review, yada, yada, yada. Uh so we have run out of room, we better go back a little bit. Here we go. Administrative actions and judicial review, so. It's this section here forty through. Uh fifty here, ex parte communications and contested cases that are the statutes. Those are the laws that govern uh hearings at the ERD, okay? And the question, we don't really care anything about that except for, is there a rule that says it's open to the public, that's what we're trying to look for, and because. Ryan or uh let's say, uh I need to follow my own advice, Von Briesen and MPS have argued here that. Chapter two twenty seven somehow says that in an uh an attorney working for the governor of the state of Wisconsin is a judicial officer. So um we're trying to figure out where that might be, you know, he's given us much help, so we're just looking here, but might we may find the answer, so um. I wanna take you down here, uh declaratory judgments. And we're gonna skip that, cause that is a whole thing. Ooh, alright. That is a whole thing, declaratory rulings. Right to a hearing, now here we're talking, okay, this is what gets us in front of the ERD, this is what sort of. Creates the workers tribunal and in lack of a better word, okay? In addition to any other right provided by law, so that's in there too, any person be uh. Written filing a written request with an agency for a hearing shall have the right to a hearing, which will be treated as a contested case if, okay? And the way this is written, you gotta have all these things. There is a substantial interest if the person is injured, in fact, or threatened with an injury by an agency action or inaction. Okay, so a employer who gets a uh. Notice from the Equal Rights Division that there is a complaint filed against them, has basically noticed that the agency will uh. Make it find an order against them if they don't respond, so they've got a right to a contested hearing, okay? There's no evidence of legislative intent that the interest is not to be protected. That is a double negative, so uh let's put it un- positively. There is evidence of legislative intent that the interest is to be protected, okay? So that means, yes, the Wisconsin Fair Employment Act is that legislative intent, bam. See, the injury to the person requesting a hearing is a different and kinder degree from the injury to the general public caused by the agency action or inaction. So that's sort of standing, okay, but it's your peer, not just like it uh. A general issue to the lake, okay? It's gotta affect you directly, not generally, right, I don't like. That people are being discriminated against in the state of Wisconsin, so I'm gonna sue every employer, okay, that you don't have standing in somebody else's case. And that there's a dispute of material fact, okay, so we're not gonna have a hearing if we don't disagree, if we, there's no disagreement that they're. Uh been discriminated against or that they haven't been discriminated against, for example, okay, so any of those, you get a hearing. Alright. And it says right there, it doesn't apply to rulemaking procedures. Alright, so. Division of Hearing and Appeals. That is separate from what we're talking about because. This eh, there's a specific rule that says that the ERD is the one handling these things, okay? That's the Wisconsin Fair Employment Act. Contested case, notice, parties, hearing record, okay, in contested cases, that's what we're talking about, all parties should be afforded an opportunity. For hearing after reasonable notice, except in the case of an emergency. Reasonable notice shall consist of mailing a notice to known interested parties at least ten days prior to the hearing, so that's not a WebEx. Invitation, just so we're clear, and the notice has to say time, place, nature of the hearing, including whether it's a, what kind of proceeding it is. The statement of the legal authority, a short and plain statement of the matter is asserted. The subject of the hearing. Okay. And so the notice may be limited to a statement of the issues involved. Uh huh. Alright. All opportunities shall be afforded to all parties to present evidence and to rebut or offer countervailing evidence, okay? So that means you have the right to be heard. Period, that there's, that's, this, these are all statutes, so whatever it may say in any rules or anywhere else. A lurk or anything else, this is, this is the law. Alright, and any action to be set for hearing, the agency or hearing examiner may direct the parties. To appear before for a conference to consider the clarification of the issues, the necessary desirability of the amendment amendments of the pleadings. The po- possibility of obtaining admissions, the limitation of the number of witnesses, such other matters as may aid in the disposition of the action, okay? Oh, this is important, the agency or hearing examiner presiding at a conference under this subsection shall make a memorandum. For the record, which summarizes the action taken at the conference, the amendments allowed to the pleadings and so forth. Such memorandum shall control the subsequent course of action unless modified at the hearing to prevent manifest injustice, so this is sort of like a a uh. An order is what they would call it, but it's really a memo. And um it is supposed to. For the record, which summarizes the action taken at the conference, so no new action. Is to happen in this memo. There's no decision making happening there, this memo is only summarizing the oral decisions that were made at the the uh pre-hearing conference. Here says all the kinds of evidence, this is the record, I mean, okay? So all these documents that you may have been submitted are now a part of the record for review. It's important, they have to be recorded, that's important. Now, this is quite important, all staff memoranda and staff data. Not admitted as evidence in a contested case, which are submitted to the hearing examiner or officials. Of the agency in connection with their consideration of case are not part of the official record, but shall be made part of the file and shall be served on all parties. Any party may, within ten days of service of such memoranda or data, submit comments thereon to the examiner or officials. And such comments shall also be served on all parties and placed in the file, I don't know what that does for you, but okay. Got it. Here's this factual basis of the decision, so solely be the evidence and matters officially noted. So that means an ALJ can only consider the uh items brought to them and nothing else. Not, for example, did Secretary Pachacheck talk to them about their their holiday plans, just for example. Oh, look at this, substitution of hearing examiner assigned by the Division of Hearings and Appeals. A person who has applied for a contract permit or other approval from the Department of Natural Resources, okay, that doesn't help us. Or the Department of Agro- uh that is for which the Division of Hearings and Appeals has been assigned, that doesn't help us. Alright, evidence and official notice. Okay, here's the important one that says an agency hearing examiner shall not be bound by the common law or statutory rules of evidence. The agency or hearing examiner shall admit all testimony, having reasonable probative value, but shall exclude immaterial irrelevant. Or unduly rep- headed to rep- geez, we're gonna try it again. Immaterial, irrelevant, or unduly repetitious testimony or evidence that is inadmissible under nine oh one oh five. The agency or hearing examiner shall give effect to the rules of privilege recognized by law. Basic principles of rela- relevancy, materiality, and probative force shall govern the proof of all questions of fact. Objects to evidentiary offers and offers of proof of evidence not admitted may be made and shall be noted in the record. I'm gonna read that again, objections to evidentiary offers of. Offers and offers of proof of evidence not admitted may be made and shall be noted in the record. So. Not only is there case law about offers of proof, but you have the statutory right in administrative hearing to make an offer of proof. All evidence, including records and documents in the possession of the agency or hearing examiner, of which the agency or hearing examiner desires to avail himself. Or herself shall be duly offered and made a part of the record in the case, every po- party shall. Be afforded adequate opportunity to rebut or offer countervailing evidence. That's really bizarre, cause it seems to say that an hearing examiner can bring in any evidence that they want to. But the party shall have the of uh adequate opportunity to rebut or offer countervailing evidence. Here, I guess, is my question, it says. All evidence, including records and documents in the possession of the agency or hearing examiner, of which the agency or hearing examiner desires to unveil him or herself. Shall be duly offered and made part of the record in the case. Every party shall be afforded an adequate opportunity to rebut or offer countervailing evidence. And then it says, a party may conduct cross examinations reasonably required for a full and true disclosure of the facts. So that seems to me to say that if an ALJ. Offers evidence other than documentary evidence or records, meaning their own testimony, that you have a right to cross examine them. Okay, here's the subpoena. Issue subpoenas, I think there's another rule that adds more force to that. So they can issue protective orders which just to protect a part, party or person from annoyance, embarrassment, oppression or undue burden or expense. Alright, we've made it all the way through and I'm sorry, this is a journey for all of us here. But I just wanna point out, a party's attorney of record. The attorney shall at the issue when time of the issue send a copy of the subpoena, I don't know that that's ever happened, that's why I'm. Surprised either by me or by the opposing counsel, I cannot ever remember a time when the attorney has given um. A copy of the subpoena to the tribunal. Maybe I'm reading that wrong. Okay, doesn't matter, cause we are going to move on to hearing examiners. Oh. May undercut their theory a little bit. This is um, we, I guess I haven't published that video, there are the nine powers of a hearing examiner and we're gonna get into them. But this is I think what is the final blow here, we haven't even gotten into the first page, but well, that's how it goes. Two two seven point four six, hearing examiners, examination of evidence by agency. Number one, except is provided under two two seven four three one, an agency may designate an official of the agency. I'm gonna say that again, an agency may designate an official of the agency. Or an employee on its staff or borrower from another agency. As a hearing examiner to preside over any contested case. Subject to rules of the agency, examiners presiding at hearings may, okay? We'll go into those nine rules, we're gonna read that here, oh my god, we're at an hour, but I I want to. Uh, just go back to what we've been doing for this whole time here is saying. An ALJ is a judicial officer appointed to conduct hearings on behalf of the Department of Workforce Development. See, chapter uh, Wisconsin stats, chapter two two seven, okay? So first we were saying that the statutes were a poor guide to tell us what a uh. Trial court judge means because the uh, Supreme Court rules have told us anyway, okay? But now we're gonna see that even taking these two things into account, that they're in direct op- direct opposition, okay? Let's go back here again. Except an agency may designate an official of the agency, okay? Let's. So then we go right over here and we'll see the answer in a second, I just wanna point out, here we're at almost an hour. I did wax on for fifteen minutes, so we're, you know, eh, half an hour territory here. And uh, we've pointed out, I think, pretty can uh, easily that this is a bunch of hogwash. But um, keep in mind that the complainant has to pay, you know, a lot of money. To get this answered and resolved and they know that this the the, this is hogwash. So, let's go find, uh, this is two twenty seven point zero one and this is the um. What they are pointing to as um, supporting their proposition here. Chapter two twenty seven, so we're gonna go back to that there and right at the beginning is definitions. And it says, agency means board commissioned committee, department or officer in the state government. Except the governor, a district attorney or a military or judicial officer. I didn't even think it was gonna be that good. But uh, it is, so we'll just go right back. Bam, except an agency and we know what that means, not a judicial officer. May to designate an official of the not a judicial officer and employees on its staff or borrowed from another non judicial officer. Under as a hearing examiner to preside over any contested case. Should we go look at administrative code, chapter two eighteen where it says how the hearings are conducted, I guess we could do that. Alright, here we're back again, uh, we are two two seven point four six. And this is sort of relevant to our research here, it says. Alright, notwithstanding any other provisions of law, the hearing examiner presiding at a hearing may order such protective measures. As are necessary to protect the trade secrets of a party to the hearing, okay? And the section, there's a definition of what trade secret means, okay? So that seems like they could have a secret hearing if it, there was some parts of it. Uh, related to a um, trade secret. We'll, we keep going, but I I don't see anything here that gets us to. Uh, that. Alright, here we go, we're at fair employment. Go to definitions. Administrative law judge means the examiner appointed to conduct hearings under the act. Agency means an office, department. Independent agency, authority, institution, association, society or other body in state government created or authorized to be by the constitution. Any law, including the legislature and the courts, okay, that's in this statute. This chapter is an agency can also mean a court, keep that in mind, okay? Division means the equal rights division. Complaints, who can file them, where to file them, assistance of the department, let's go back up. Investigations, notice of hearing, let's see if that says. The hearing shall be held in the county where the alleged act of discrimination occurred or in another location with the consent of the party. Okay. I don't see that in there saying that they can close anything. I see that it says it can't be done by WebEx, uh, unless without the consent, I do see that. I see that they have to give notice by first class mail and they have to do all these other things. Um, I don't think they always do that. We're just rolling along here with this. Let's go to hearings, maybe that says what could happen, hearings. Hearing shall be conducted in uh, conformity with the acts. The parties may appear in the person of our council or other representative. Postponement, failure to appear. So far I haven't seen anything, oh, keep going. And he's back, um, I, let's say. That there comes a time and every bit of legal research where you have to accept that uh, you're not gonna find it today. And uh, I think I'm like forty five minutes into this post video or in between video review here. So um, this is one of those things, I've called two people now, everybody knows it's the fact. They know that the department knows it's a fact, duh, yeah. So um, it's one of those things. Yeah, so, as we have learned, sometimes you have to accept the mystery for the time being and then we'll move on. Um, so that's where we're at, I just wanna recap here, um, that we have gone through the first. Page, three paragraphs of this motion here, which again I think is astonishingly un-American. I, it's um, the entire thing is. I guess a four more pages, then we got an affidavit of Ryan, uh, and then a bunch of transcripts. So, uh, that shouldn't be too hard to get through when we actually do get that chance uh, together, it may even be next week. Um, but I want to um, show you that's how, now we've got an argument and we can say. That's not, you're not talking about the same thing, buddy, a hearing examiner is not a judicial officer, next, right? But let's get into why this thing is un-American and what they're trying to do, which is to not have any recording of uh, the hearing. So that you can't know what your public officials are doing. That's, that's uh, that's gonna be problematic, it's not gonna work for me, as uh, am I saying. So um, that is the update there, um, I really enjoyed our time together and I do miss uh. I, yeah, um, I'm glad we're we're moving in the right direction once again, um, it's been a rough month, hey, thanks very much. I know everybody likes this is, I know everybody likes the cross examination, but that's what we're doing here, but let's not forget. Due process is what, how we get the sizzle, so um, sometimes we gotta look at the sausage, the due process. Thanks for keeping with us, we'll keep you. Thanks for keeping stick us, we'll keep you in something.